Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, September 14th at 7:00 PM. We are meeting publicly at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room, 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville. The first... I'd just like to make sure, is anybody else filming this meeting besides Lake cam? Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing continued for 13 Main Street. So at this time, I guess we've had some new information or newly reviewed information for our traffic study. I think we have some folks here from Environmental Partners. If I could, I'd like you guys to come up to a microphone, identify yourselves, if the board has questions, and you go through. Probably at the same time, if somebody would like to come up representing 13 Main Street, just in case there's a conversation we need to have and you guys are prepared, maybe you, Bob? We'll go. So for the record, over the past week or so, we've had a traffic study that was provided by the applicants, reviewed by Environmental Partners. There was a memorandum from Environmental Partners and a response letter from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Publicly, that's where we are, so I don't know if it makes sense for you guys to go through your concerns?
Sure. So hello, everyone. I'm Steve Chikari with Environmental Partners. We were the peer reviewer for this project, for the traffic study. So we reviewed the traffic study overall. The study was prepared by Hussaini Design Group. They did a complete job, pretty much covered everything that a study of this kind should cover. We had a few comments that I'm going to bring up tonight. One of the comments is that the town reached out regarding the fact that, based on how the bylaws, based on the language on the bylaw, there's a chance that, over time, this development, which is intended to be a senior housing development, might turn into a regular housing. And the town wanted us to look into the difference in the generated trips between the two uses. We ran a trip generation analysis, and we found that within the peak periods, there's a, there will be an increase of 26 to 27 vehicles per hour if this, the whole development, would operate as a regular housing. During the peer review process, we went back and forth a couple times with the traffic engineer, and we asked some minor revisions on the traffic analysis, and we reviewed the revised information as well. Overall, the project, the addition of the project trips seemed to have a minor impact, increasing the delays a little bit overall at the intersection. But there was only one noteworthy increase in delay during the evening peak hour, which the Riverside, Riverside Drive, a westbound movement, would increase by about 40 seconds in delay. We also need to mention that the way this traffic study, that intersection was analyzed was as an isolated intersection. It did not account for the traffic signal that is just north of it. That traffic signal tends to create some additional gaps in between the switching of the phases. So there might not, that increase in delay may not be how it will be experienced in the future. And another topic was the crashes. The crashes were analyzed between 2017 to 2021. We noted that 2021 is not a closed year in MassDOT database, and they recommend that we only use the closed years because anything after that will be subject to significant changes potentially. Right now, MassDOT has closed up to the end of 2020. So we looked at the years before that, 2016 and 2015. We found one crash in 2015 and one crash in 2016 at the study intersection. And then we calculated the crash rate, and it falls far below the averages of the state and District 5. We also received some additional crash information from the town just recently, and we flipped through them. We did a quick search, and we found one crash in 2021, if I'm not mistaken, on Riverside. Nothing else in the vicinity or at the intersection itself. There was a few items, a few comments that we had on the site plan. There was a discrepancy in the total number of the parking spaces that was stated in the report versus what added up on the site plan. The site plan shows 82 spaces. The report stated 87. And we also looked at the bylaws. The bylaws would require at least 80 parking spaces, two per the dwelling unit, which we have 40 dwelling units here, two per dwelling unit, 80 total, plus anything that's needed for accessible parking spaces that would be added in addition to that, which adds up to 84. The site plan only provides 82 parking spaces. There was also the dimension of the accessible parking space that needs to be... That dimension is actually in compliance with the ADA requirements, but it does not meet the minimum requirements of the bylaws. And also, we noted that no truck or emergency vehicle turning templates was provided. That's usually what we review if it's provided to us, to make sure that all the maneuvers, all the necessary maneuvers are possible. And the last thing, just recently, just yesterday, actually, the town reached out to us asking about the fact that, does the study account for the mixed-use development that will be constructed, is planned to be constructed nearby? And it does not include that. It turns out that it's going to be a major development, which will have a lot of traffic. We don't have information for it. The study does mention that there's going to, there is a development nearby, but apparently at the time that it was being prepared, no traffic study was available for that development, so it wasn't accounted for. That's pretty much all I wanted to cover. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any board members have any questions? No. Would you represent this traffic study company?
I prepared the traffic study. I mean, I can just elaborate a little bit on a couple comments that...
Yeah, if you don't mind. If I could get you just to state your name for the record?
Yeah. My name, Faisal Hussaini. I'm with the Hussaini Design Group. Actually, probably can give him a business card if that's...
She's the one that's going to keep the minutes, so if you don't mind, thank you.
I'm always prepared for that, by the way. So if we scale that development based on the use of it as being a senior housing, 55 and over, it's really a small development. Four units are hardly kind of a big generator of traffic. So all in all, if you look at the trip generated by that site, expected to be generated by that site, based on the rates that we use from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that's based on many studies throughout the nation, and based on the number of units, we have, in the morning, about six vehicle trips that exit the site, where four turn left, and then the two turn right. So six trips in one hour, basically. So it's not continuous flow of traffic that's going to be interacting with the traffic on Main Street. Similarly, in the evening, we have four and two as well. And then if you are coming northbound on Main Street and turning left on the side in the morning, you only have one vehicle in one hour, and then you have three vehicles in one hour in the evening. If you are coming from southbound on Main Street, you will have three vehicles entering in the morning, and then five vehicles entering in the evening.
Per hour.
Per hour. Everything is per hour, based on those calculations. So, and as Steve mentioned, is that the level of delays that's being experienced there is only experienced by Riverside Drive and the site, because that intersection is en-signalized. When you do en-signalization, so nobody on Main Street will have any kind of control, so they're not being stopped. Regardless how much traffic goes on Main Street, we will always get what we call level of service A. However, if you are on the side street, you are going to experience longer delays because the behavior of the driver is that if they have the accepted gaps, which is the space between two vehicles, adequate to their comfort level, then they will enter the intersection. And then, based on studies done by Federal Highway Administration, which is included in my report, they estimated that a driver, an average driver, needs about 8.2 seconds of gap to comfortably turn. My calculation of the site itself, based on the volume, it was about six to seven seconds. So the difference is like 1.2 seconds of gap that's needed for a vehicle to turn. The result of it, you'll find that there will be, people are waiting a bit longer. I mean, you are not going to see congestion or jam in there, it's just a vehicle will have to wait a couple seconds more before they enter the intersection. The level of service overall for the intersection is A, which is a good level of service. And so from that perspective, we found that the site does not generate any impact on the highways. And keep in mind that that Main Street is a state highway now, and the developer is going to apply for curb cut permit, so the state is not going to let anything go without being, you know, being designed properly. And that should kind of give additional comfort to the town that the state will be reviewing that. In terms of the change in use, you know, I've been in this business for 40 years now. I don't think there was any time that I was asked to kind of, to do what if, change in use, for example. So if we're going to change that site from being a senior housing to an apartment building, for example, which is going to generate more traffic, and by the way, the senior housing generates the least number of trips compared to other uses, if you use apartment building or other uses. So they, they definitely have to go back and do the traffic evaluation. If they come to you and say, okay, now I want to make it an apartment building, they have to provide you with the traffic impacts on that intersection at that time. Similarly, if we, like the development that's going on, and I think I spoke with the town planner, is that Mark? And he was very helpful in explaining everything, and there was a big development that's going to go there, but they have not really applied, and so there is no way we can include it part of our analysis or evaluation. What I would say is that if they come after us, they should account for what we have provided, and then do their evaluation. So all in all, I think, you know, I'm glad we coordinated the effort, then we don't not have to bring everything in here and discuss it in here. And then, you know, I think they did a great job, and then I hope we answered all the questions that they were looking for.
Thank you. So do any planning board members have any questions at this time for anything traffic-related? Because we're just a little tight on microphones, and I wanted to switch to legal counsel once we're through with this process, and I just don't want to keep calling people back and forth.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So my concern is the fact that, knowing that Rhino Capital had, they do, so the nearby location, there is actually a special permit granted for a warehouse. It went to appeal and is still in appeal. And it's a shame, because I guess our, you know, we did have town staff that met with the developer and knew as far back as March and April that this could be used as a mixed use, but it didn't come to this board until the end of July. So it's a shame that that's, this study isn't accounting for, you know, what the town, you know, back during town meeting, you know, the town expected mixed use to generate between 7,500 and 10,250 vehicle trips per day. So that's significant. Yeah, knowing that now Rhino Capital is looking to go in the mixed use sort of vein, I think that this needs to be considered, because this is significant, as they noted. And, you know, this project came to us as a 19-unit, 55-plus, and now it's two large apartment buildings with 40 units. So it is a significant, more than twice the number of units that was originally proposed.
And would you like to respond to that? Because there's a gentleman behind you that would like to also...
Mr. Chairman, Michael Schon, please come up. Sorry. I'm the attorney for...
Yep.
Okay. The project that is before you tonight is what the board's supposed to be considering. What was before you six months ago isn't on the table. What Rhino had before you isn't on the table. This project's on the table. So I think that the focus should be on whether or not the project meets your bylaw standards, not the what ifs.
Thank you.
If I may, this is the planning board, and we must be concerned with pedestrian and vehicle safety.
All right. And Michelle, I do want to see any concern, but I think that, well, again, not to get in the weeds, but the Rhino Capital project that will come before us at some point will have to go through this process, and I think that once they generate the trips, it will be on them to make the changes, or the state will force them to upgrade traffic signals and things like that, road widenings if their project, because of the application timing, and they would be behind this. It's unfair to put that on this project for...
Well, they're not really behind it. They're only behind it because of the appeal, and that that changed the way everything was going. So this really would have been after. And, and not only that, you know, I just lost my train of thought. You said something about, they will have to do it eventually. Well, this affects the whole area. You know, what goes here and what goes there, it was all part of one large parcel that was divided. And it just seems like they both have to be considered, because we know that one is, there is, and not only that, so, oh, what I was going to say is, the problem with, you know, when we have town officials that are seeing plans and not recording them, then that creates an issue, where now, this study was done in May, and if there was that information in March or April, it should have been part of this originally. So it's a shame that that didn't happen.
The level of detail on what was shared by Rhino Capital was basically shelves moving around on a site drawing. That was the level of detail. You cannot do any planning, you cannot do any traffic analysis, stormwater, it'll take six to eight months for them to develop actual full set of construction drawings, any one of the phases.
Mr. Hussaini, if I could ask you, if you don't mind, to step back to a seat, I'm going to ask Alex if you could come up, please, and we talk to you about this.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex Weisit, KP Law. So happy to answer any questions.
Addressing Michelle's concerns, but also handling our process with the proper legal manner, you've overheard what we've talked about here. Your recommendation, in my opinion, for 80 trips a day, or whatever the total sum of this project is, I don't know if there's anything else we should be doing that, it doesn't seem like we would stop them at this point. They're within limits of the bylaw. Could you help me to understand that, if there should be any connection to this other project that has, has applied, has given traffic study data for a warehouse, although under appeal, may change to many more trips, but again, so just tie me in with the state highway and how that's all going to work out for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So from a legal perspective, the board, in my opinion, should be limiting your review to the project you have in front of you. You can certainly take into account, you know, other currently existing uses, but to, you know, to rely or take into account sort of hypothetical projects, the details of which aren't really known at this point. While I understand the concern, I don't, in my opinion, it wouldn't be appropriate to, you know, condition this project on a hypothetical, if you will. So, you know, to the extent that the studies that have been performed meet the current standards of the bylaw, then, you know, I think you should base your decision on the data before you...
Solely on the information provided...
Right.
...by this application.
Right.
Michelle, you know, I want you to feel comfortable with this. Do you have any questions for Alex?
And just to build off of that too, Mr. Chairman, and you started to allude to this, once the other application, you know, gets more formalized, and if they presumably will be coming back before you all when their project is in, you know, once they realize what they really want, intend to do, they're going to have to take into account this use. Right? So their engineers and traffic experts are going to have to, you know, take into account the additional traffic of this project in their calculations.
And, well, I mean, it's not a hypothetical. Like I said, there was a special permit granted for a large 24-hour operation warehouse.
Yeah.
So that was granted in 2021, and it has been in appeal for quite a while.
Right.
And it, my concern is, even if that data were to affect this traffic study, you know, was it properly taken into consideration? Because we know that something is going to go there, whether it's what was originally proposed or something else.
Understood. And when, when it's clear what actually is going to go there, and when they come before you with plans for what is actually going to go there, at that time, they are going to have to take into account what's already happening. So if this project is done at that point, and the traffic is flowing, then that, the data from that traffic at that time that they apply will be taken into account, and you guys can condition that project as needed at that time.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this project, I'll use both projects as the example, one being the larger project, the state may condition them when they go through the state highway application process for their curb cuts, they may say, your vehicle generation onto the state highway is such that we need you to add a lane. It could be a hypothetical for a very large project.
Absolutely.
Whereas the state, because it is all coming out on the state highway, at some point it does become up to the state of Massachusetts to say, the gentleman behind us here today are going to go through that process, and the state's going to decide the level of impact that they're putting onto the road, and they're going to condition them...
That's right.
...based on whether it be just a sidewalk across, or a crosswalk across their entrance, or something greater than that.
Yep. Yeah, the state will be applying their standards, that's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the planning board have any legal questions on this?
I have one question, and it's, maybe this is a hypothetical case, if, as Mr. Schon had spoken earlier, that this project as it stands now may convert into all apartments, which would bring with it families, and as the traffic study within had to be done, we should get two buses a day in the morning and at night, would have to stop there. That could create a real traffic issue.
So, Alex, I'll word that differently for you. There has been some concern about the way that our bylaw for this mixed-use, age-restricted housing has been drafted, and there's concern that it will just eventually morph into regular housing because of the way that bylaw is drafted. Are you familiar with the bylaw?
I am. So I did take a look at that language, and, you know, the bylaw talks about one, at least one individual in each unit needing to be 55-plus at the time of occupancy. So, you know, my interpretation of that would be, at the time of each new occupancy, meaning, you know, whenever there's a new lease signed, one individual signing the lease needs to be 55-plus. And I think a condition to that effect would be appropriate in order to make sure that use is maintained, because that's the use that's allowed as of right. So, you know, that's, that would be appropriate, in my opinion.
So in our final approval, a condition that the bylaw, every change of occupancy be upheld for the 55 and over for at least one tenant, occupant. I see, if...
I don't necessarily disagree with counsel's opinion, except that, again, I think the board is, by including such a condition, this board would be trampling on the zoning enforcement officer's jurisdiction. So when you folks are evaluating this site under your site design bylaws, it doesn't go into what the use is. The use is governed by zoning, so you're conditioning something that's beyond what this board is authorized to do under your bylaw. So, and I know that's happened in a couple instances, and I don't, I'm not faulting anyone for doing it, because I think it makes sense, but I think you're going on both the bylaw allows you to do, if you were to uphold such a condition.
Well, wouldn't it make sense for a broader traffic study, then?
I think, I think you've heard tonight, and I think Faisal can address this as well, even if it were to change to a different style apartment, that the analysis is based on what the bylaw requires, there really is no impact. It doesn't impact the ability of the road to handle the traffic. You'd have more trips, which would, as I understand it, there'd be more queuing of the cars in Riverside in this parking lot, because you have to kind of cut the gaps. That's the only impact. It wouldn't impact the main roadway. Any impact would be on the site itself.
I understand that the change in traffic, and it's not going to be a huge impact to Route 105, Mike, but it's, you know, I'm feeling two different arguments from you. One is, we're going to stick to the bylaw, but traffic doesn't matter, but we provided traffic based on the bylaw.
I'm not suggesting traffic doesn't matter. I think traffic's very important, and I think we've had a study that's been peer reviewed by your folks, and I haven't heard that...
Maybe doesn't matter is the right term, but you would decide yourself. You know, if it increases, it increases.
Understood, but my point is, it's not going to affect, the only impact it would have would not be on the roadway. It would affect the development, you know, in and of itself.
I don't see how that's even a possibility.
But I don't see how reiterating and clarifying zoning, which... the zoning, which if this is permitted, then a condition violates any of the board's authority.
Hmm, not in my opinion.
It, yeah, extends beyond what the board's authority is.
She's stating what the bylaw says.
Just stating what the bylaw is and, and what this is permitted under.
But, excuse me, you, you both, you would be interpreting what the bylaw says and that's zoning enforcement officers. That's in his bailiwick. That's what he does. So by imposing such a condition, you would be stepping into his shoes.
Well, I mean, they, they have to interpret whether it's a use as allowed of right in order to do site plan review, right? So they've already interpreted it and you've replied as it, as it being a fifty-five plus use.
That's right.
So all the decision is gonna say is we're opposing this condition because the applicant is represented that they're pursuing a fifty-five plus use.
Which, which is, which is governed by another section of the bylaw. So your, 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 your jurisdiction is limited to the site design section of the bylaw. You're looking at the overlay district, your authority to, to condition use, which, which isn't what this board, what this board's authority is under site plan review. Site plan reviews, does it fit into the neighborhood?
Be a vehicular or pedestrian
Right.
flaw.
Right.
Which when it increases, that's part of our jurisdiction, isn't it? Or to, to, just to figure out if it's gonna work based on that.
Speculation that this, it's going to default into something else.
We're just eliminating that speculation.
But, but all I'm saying is not within your, your, your bailiwick to do that. It's not within this board's jurisdiction. I mean, rely on your counsel.
We will.
If it's a condition, it's a condition and we'll, we'll deal with it then, but
Okay.
I, I don't think it's within your authority to, 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 to address.
Noted. Thank you, Mike.
Again, uh, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, um, it would be appropriate for the board to include a condition that essentially reaffirms that this is a fifty-five plus use and it should remain as such.
Thank you. Uh, seeing as this is a public hearing, is anybody from the public, would you like to make any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there was, there was a couple minor changes to the site plan based on E P's comments.
Two parking spaces?
The two parking spaces.
Yeah, uh, so if I could then, before I ask you to come up, Noel, Bob, would you wanna address those? There were two things, I believe, add the parking
Yeah, a couple little things I'd like to address, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Forbes, Museum of Consulting Engineers for the record. And, um, we, we did add the two spaces, um, that E P asked for and they're right here. In the, not these people's review letter, but the engine, the site plan review letter from E P, the second. They asked us to, uh, highlight the areas that were gonna receive riprap and then add a note as to delineating what type of riprap that, that was going to be. And we've done that in all the riprap areas. So that's essentially the two, uh, main changes to the plan, the two only changes to the plan. And, um, I just wanted to address the, um, the town's requirement for the twelve foot wide handicap space.
And this is the one that doesn't meet the town's requirements, but it meets A D A requirement.
Well, what the town requires, what we provide is essentially the same thing as what the town is required. They require, if there were two, if there were two handicap spaces, they would require twenty-four foot wide space. And what, what for eight, to, to, to comply with A D A, you have to have an eight foot wide space, an eight foot lane in between and eight foot wide space, which is twenty-four feet. It's just to comply with A D A, that middle eight feet has to be painted as an access lane. So you've got the same width that's required by the town. The town's requirements don't meet A D A standards, but we've given
Give anywhere.
It's the same width, just with the painted eight foot strip in the middle, which then therefore complies with A D A.
Okay.
I thought we had spoken at an earlier meeting about, was concerned about where the handicap spots would be related in relationship to the entryway. Those handicap spaces are pretty much as close
They're as close as we can get. There's the handicap spaces, here's the entrance on this building, here's the handicap spaces, here's the entrance on this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Does anybody have any other questions from the planning board regarding any of this? You guys good right now?
Yes.
Noel?
Hello.
Noel.
Hello.
Rachel.
Um, the only thing, and maybe this was discussed when I was privy to it, but what I have heard is whether it's fifty-five plus or whether it changes, people get home deliveries. People have people visit them. Some fifty-five plus people go to the senior center or maybe they have the bus that is from there come pick them up. And I haven't, I haven't heard that calculated into the traffic analysis, but maybe it's just that I haven't been privy to that, but people get stuff delivered from Amazon and Peapod and all, all different kinds of places. I, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
So part of the analysis that we do, the, the, the rate that we use, it, it does encompass every, everything. It compass employees coming to work in that site. It does encompass deliveries and other things.
And if you could just restate, that's out of the highway standard?
The Institute of Transportation Engineers is called the Trip Generation Rate Handbook. And, uh, in terms of the delivery, in terms of space, that will be part of the site design there. You know, they make the radius adequate for the vehicle to turn and come back around.
But you included the trips as part of that metric.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else, uh, like to make any comments? Come right up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Carrie Palio Logos. Um, I just had a question. These are both
I might have one question for you.
Yes.
Do you want that spelled?
Yes. Ready? Okay. P A L A I O L O G O S.
Thank you, Kelly.
It used to be simple Taylor, but it's not. Um, um, so we're talking, I'm late to the game. I'm sorry. Um, the, this is housing we're talking about. Where on Main Street? Like next to C V S is that?
Between C V S and the new self-storage.
Housing there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Three acre parcel, forty units.
Yeah.
Forty units on, in that little, oh, for, for fifty-five and older?
Yeah.
One occupant at the time.
I live on Main Street, so I'm just, I'm just wondering. Main Street's a mess.
That's, that's not for us. No, I think he was putting it as, this is, this is the site plan here.
So how many units?
There'll be two large buildings that are three floors and they each have twenty units in them.
Elevators and such in it?
We didn't design it. We're just, we just peer reviewed the traffic study.
There needs to be elevators designed into those for fifty-five older. We have a lot of, you know, disabled people and whatnot. Why aren't there elevators?
Where we, 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 we are working for the town to peer review the traffic study.
We're, we're
We're just getting on the traffic study?
Yeah, well, all that stuff has sort of been vetted, so.
So you're just approve, trying to approve it tonight or we don't know?
No, we're, we're going through all the loose ends now because we've been going through this since March, last year. Really with the, when you started with the nineteen units, it was twenty-two.
Nineteen and now how many are there?
Forty.
Forty units?
Yeah.
Wow.
Hey, there's gonna be like four hundred going right next door, so.
Which ones?
It's not part of this project, so. Not gonna discuss it.
More on Main Street though.
Yeah.
So that's the key area where everybody wants to put all the massive housing in Lakeville, right? So there goes, and these are high rises too. I just think it's disgusting. I really do. I think our town, I mean, we have all the apartments there and I feel like these developers are just coming into Lakeville and they're sticking them on a three acre lot, a five acre lot. I guess that's the way it is.
Back when you and I were young in town, this zoning was created by somebody who thought it would be a great idea.
Yeah.
And it's all by right.
Right. I understand that.
It's just, it's something we're trying to make it the best project possible.
Right.
But it's, stuff like this is gonna come and it's
Oh, I know. I under, it's here, but I just don't like, when is it, when does it stop? Like
When we're out of land.
When we're out of land. Ooh, that's a great thing for the town, all your developers. Ooh, great. All right. Well, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
I don't think personally we need any more apartments unless it's specifically for the elderly people because people can't even afford their rents and whatnot, but our elderly population and those places, if they do get built, they need to have elevators for these people and for disabled people too. So that's how I feel about, I found. Hello.
Who, who are you?
Susan Spiel or Ten Valley Road. So fifty-five plus in the bylaw only means one occupant has to be fifty-five, correct?
Yeah.
So that means that grandma at fifty-five, which could be me, could take one of those apartments and then have my family come live with me that is in their thirties with kids. Is that correct?
Legal. It's, it sounds legal based on the way the bylaw is drafted.
Correct. I think it would depend on, um, I don't know if there's gonna be a management company or whatever the lease requirements are, but yeah, at least one occupant at the time of occupancy.
So that doesn't have to be in the, in the lease saying that no children or anything like that, like Blueberry Estates, which is fifty-five and over and you cannot, it's in the lease that they cannot have any children.
I, I don't believe that's the way the bylaw is drafted for this.
So then the, the traffic study can't be correct because how are you gonna only have two cars to a unit if you've got kids and everything else?
I, I think a lot of that's based on the bedrooms and the
And how many bedrooms? Is it, do we know?
We're not inside the building. We're doing outside the building.
Okay.
So.
Cause I mean, if there are three bedroom units, you know exactly what's gonna happen.
I believe they're all two, two bedroom.
They could choose in ones.
Ones and twos.
All right. But still, the traffic study still doesn't make sense because if you have grandma in there with her family and kids, there are gonna be more cars and not enough parking spaces.
They'll be sleeping in bureau drawers then.
It could happen.
One or two bedroom, eh, anything can happen.
Anything could happen. Absolutely.
Anywhere.
Okay.
But
it's just
Your concerns are noted. We're gonna do our best to
Thank you.
make it be the best it can for later.
And elevators.
Anybody else?
Hey, John Gregory, Portelli Road, a, a customer of C V S, which was right next door to the property and going toward Middleburg, Little Borough, trying to turn left in the C V S parking lot, just with today's traffic was a nightmare. It was maybe two to three o'clock, so the school buses were running, schools in session. And I'd like to hear from the track plan. What is the consideration for the, the business that's there now? And that corner, C V S in the, in the, in the possible growth of that business.
See, at some point, because it's on a state highway, John, all that becomes the state's issue after the design stage and all this is done. You know, if that big project comes in next door, it's, yeah, it's, it's gonna be more traffic, but it's more traffic. I mean, it's gonna be more business for those businesses. I'm not sure what your question is. I mean, what would the consideration be for any other business?
Does the traffic study include the traffic to the existing business at C V S? Yes or no?
Yeah, you considered all the traffic that goes on that road, right?
Yeah.
So part of the traffic numbers, we do, uh, we hire a company that goes out there and count the traffic for every fifteen minutes and on the hour as well and summarize them. So it accounts for everybody who goes through that intersection. If it's C V S or any other businesses around there, anybody who traveled during those peak hours will be accounted for.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but so to summarize, they take the existing traffic through those traffic counts and then they plug in their numbers for the additional traffic that they've generated with this project. So then all the information he gave earlier about the distance between cars and the time, forty seconds, what was that lag at a set of lights?
Eight, about eight seconds for the, uh, for the, for the gap, are you talking?
That, you have the, the gap for comfort to pull out of a street
Yeah, yeah.
in traffic, but you also had said it didn't take into account the next light, but at the Riverside light, you may have a forty second delay. That's all based on all current traffic and the generated traffic by this project.
Yeah.
That's what the traffic study does.
If I can add to the numbers, so we take the existing traffic and we project it for five years from now.
With additional growth?
With, with a one percent growth. We calculate that if it comes up to be higher.
Normal, one percent is a normal
We, we have been doing that for the state everywhere. Ends up to being around, you know, it comes lower than one, but we use one to be conservative and, and we're not, we always try to be conservative in, in the numbers as well.
But one percent over five years, so a five percent growth, that would always cover it because even if you had one big year,
Yep.
you're typically always under one percent growth.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, just a quick, quick question. So, um, the data that you use, it's statewide data? Is there, is it, so if this was Boston, is it the same sort of figures that you're using compared to a town like Lakeville or, or how do you tailor it to a small town like Lakeville compared or to Boston?
You know, there, there are six districts within the state, so each di- district has its own, uh, uh, rate. And there is a statewide rate. So, uh, you know, and here we are a part of District Five. So the data that's collected part of District Five, the state does always have count of traffic. They have on the highways, those sensors, they count traffic and they create that factor based on the district traffic.
And do you know, um, what towns and cities are included in that District Five?
Uh, I, I don't know all the towns that are part of District Five. I mean, there's a map basically. It does, if you, if you Google it basically, you can find it, right?
Thank you. Anybody else from the planning board have any questions? Mark?
I have, uh, three items. Um, the first is, um, you did show site lighting for around in some of the parking areas, but there's no building lighting shown and how that is gonna be incorporated to light up the walkways and the parking that's directly in front, that's not covered by the light, by the, uh, the pole lighting. So, um, so could you show that? Um, the second thing, we never got a final, uh, elevation drawings for the, the building. Um, so we would need to receive those and um, we only received, I believe, like a first preliminary set of elevation drawings.
Yeah, they had a check.
Okay, I, I was, didn't recall whether we had some comments and wanted some changes on those or not. And then the only other third thing would be, uh, the memo that you submitted, uh, yesterday. You had a little turning movements for the, um, fire truck, for the ladder truck and, um, I mean, it was just submitted yesterday. So I don't know if you re- reviewed it with the chief yet or not or
We have not.
Okay.
That, that's based on the information that the chief gave us.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Vehicle itself.
Right. Okay. So we'll try and, we'll forward the copy and try and just get a, okay, like this is okay. Let me take memo for, uh, for the next meeting. So other than that, those are really the only three items that I have.
Thank you. Uh, Alex, procedural question now. We're ending out on our site plan review. Uh, we have a new town planner for about a year now and he's helped us to change the process a little bit, so I just wanna make sure my process right now is corrected. If I close the public hearing and we just wanna go on to just discuss conditions even either now or at our next meeting, we can't ask any more questions, but we can close the, the public hearing and still discuss our conditions to then make our final approval of this project?
Uh, I would need to look at the site plan privileges of the bylaw, Mr. Chair. Um, generally, I think it's better to leave the hearing open if you're not ready to achieve a decision.
Um, yeah, I don't think we have a whole lot generally on that, but I mean, if you wanna, if there was an issue and you wanted to have a further discussion, let's say about turning movements of fire trucks and, and they need to make changes, I mean, I think keeping, keeping it open and
Mr. Chair, per
Mr. Chair provides here, the board shall take final action on the site plan review application within twenty-one days of the close of the public hearing, so. If you were to close tonight, you would need the applicant's consent, um, to wait to take action until after twenty-one days, unless you're meeting before then. Mike?
Chairman, um. In reviewing the last few meetings, I was under the impression that this board was fine with the design of the buildings. And that is definitely within your, your bailiwick here, your jurisdiction to look at. Um, this is the, the first I'm hearing that there's a concern about the, the look of the buildings. Um, I think with respect to the site lighting, um, that could be conditioned, but I thought we had all of our, the, the whole site was lit up with our site lighting.
I, I believe there, there's a note on the plan that any lights placed on the buildings will be Lakeville bylaw, uh, dark sky compliant lights. I believe one of the pages has a note on that.
And that's a, that's a bylaw anyway, so I think that issue would be off the table. Um, the, the turning truck radius, um, again, that's based on a computer model, you guys have seen it before in your other plans. It's based on the, the, uh, fire department's truck, it's longest truck, I believe.
Well, I, I think it's been brought up tonight because it wasn't in the information provided to Environmental Park.
Understood, understood.
They didn't see it to, to review it for us.
But if, 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 if the board were to close tonight, um, I, I think that one could be, uh, conditioned approval by the, 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 the turning template provided by the applicant, um, yesterday. I think it was yesterday you got it, right? Um, but my, my concern is the, the elevations, if there's an, an issue with the, the, the building design, I, I think we'd like to hear what it is tonight so we can respond. Otherwise, we really have no more information to provide the board, um.
I, I, I think maybe Mark is referencing, I remember, uh, myself and Bo had part of discussion that, you know, wanted to see some breakup in the side of the building, changing some gables or something. It, it was discussed at that point, he had, I think, said, well, there's some balconies there that break it up and I think I had said, well, the roof line is very monolithic, there's not many breaks in that. That was the discussion.
Yeah, just to comment real quick, it's been going on for a while, so I went and watched all the meetings to refresh my memory. And I, yeah, we had that conversation and we discussed how, uh, the siding was gonna be interchanged to provide that break. And then the, the most final set of plans that we sent over with the elevation showed the, the balconies to create the breaks.
Does it show the siding, uh, note of changes in the siding to, to also assist with that breakup of the outside of the building? Uh, what I'm taking, you just said was maybe you're gonna have some board and batten, some, uh, horizontal.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be varied.
So could you just show that or at least a close rendering or note it? Cause that's part of, you know, with the site plan review, we've kinda got, gotten, if you will, by some applicants where they. We didn't attach a site plan to this process, uh, I'm sorry, elevations to this process, so now we don't have anything to have the building commissioner say, yeah, you guys met what was approved, we just wanna have something in the file that's approved and that would maybe, even if it's just notes on it to say, you know, board and batten style siding here, clapboard style siding here, or whatever, just, we, we would like to see it broken up as best as possible. So it doesn't look monolithic, I get it that the balconies will be recessed and give you some of that look. Uh, but I, I think it's helpful that breaking up the siding into two or three different sidings also does that.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem, I just went a couple of meetings and it wasn't discussed, so I thought we were fully prepared with.
Okay.
At the last meeting, it sounded like traffic was the last issue.
I, I think it is, but just going in full circle now, when we're trying to close this out, we wanna have as close to possible of what the building's gonna look like in the file. So that when it, you know.
Understood.
When it's getting approved, or you know, the final occupancy is getting done a year or two from now, however long, I'm sure you'll be pretty quick at that. Uh. Building commissioner's looking at what, you know, cause again, we have another building in town that was built in a totally different style. And tried to sneak another floor in and.
Right.
But we didn't get that plan attached to our site plan review.
So we'll, we'll provide you an, an updated elevation that, that'll show the, the varying, um, siding components, whatever the heck Bo comes up with, just to break it up, to, to break up the mass a little bit more. And then that should be the, the last issue that you guys are gonna review before you make your decision. Is there anything else?
That, is what we've just discussed, satisfy all the things that you just come up with?
Yeah.
You were talking about the walkway lighting, uh, I, I get it that it's dark sky compliant, but I think another factor of that is just making sure photometrically that it lights the walkways entirely.
We will, we'll update that as well, if we're gonna continue it one more time, I, I have no issue updating a plan accordingly, that's fine.
We can begin to get the, uh, the conditions drafted by that next meeting so that you can do a final review of the last bit of fundamentals, review the conditions and, you know, and if you're okay with everything, perhaps even vote it that night.
Yeah, we could close it by ourselves.
I'm gonna leave it open, I, I'm gonna leave the.
I, I, I'd prefer to leave it open then.
So we can have it back and forth if we need to.
Yep.
And so if you agree, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until, uh, September twenty-eighth at seven P M. Which is two weeks from now. So they're good with it, and I have a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks for your time, guys, we appreciate it.
See you in two weeks.
Three stories, over fifty-five, there's no elevators?
I don't know.
The building. That's part of the building commissioner.
Actually, it is, we're looking at our property.
Huh?
Yeah, actually, it is, we're looking at our property.
Thank you.
Is it though, even though it's interior?
Yeah, because of the placement.
The, no, I, I guess the only thing is, A- Amy Questle usually kinda reviews stuff for us and I'm not trying to take work away from you, but we have like a bylaw we're gonna go through.
Yeah, yeah, Amy will probably work.
So, yeah, you don't have to stick around then and we'll just send a, a copy to her just for final review for town meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you, very nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you.
The building inspector, me. Oh, me, okay. Huh? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
That was a, not, that was not the plan, that was his rendering of the original, that's the plan.
The plan, well, this is the same year we got that, yeah.
Yeah.
The elevations don't look anything like, kinda like.
So we have to talk to me, the building inspector, about the design of the building? Well, he would be the one to make that determination, but why didn't they make it?
Cause we're, we're.
I'm just confused on the process.
Technically, we're outside the building.
Yeah.
We're not inside floor plan stuff, we're site plan review. That said, some of those things do intermingle a little bit, like the handicap parking spaces with the entrances. And then you get into egress stuff that then, that becomes building code.
Yeah.
And then there's ADA and Architectural Access Board and stuff that becomes more aligned with building code. And the laws that are governed by that would be triggered through the building process and if public is allowed or not public, you know, it depends if they lock the front door and everybody has a swipe card, or if the front door is open and becomes common spaces, that might trigger them requiring elevators because they have to have them if the public can access it.
So we need to, or I need to speak with building when, if this gets, when it gets approved, I guess? Because if I wanna buy, uh, if I wanna live there and, no, I'm just saying.
I know, but I don't wanna have.
No, I'm just saying, and then also, I have young kids, if I wanna live there, I'll be fifty-five in a few years. And I have three kids, so can I not live there or like, is that something, who deals with all that?
I guess you would wanna shoot an email to zoning, to, to zoning enforcement, right?
No, legally, you would be able to live there. So only, the only, uh, housing that can restrict is sixty-two and older, which is considered senior housing by the Commonwealth of Mass. So there was a court decision, so you can restrict one occupant to be like fifty-five and older.
But not all, because it becomes age discrimination.
Then you're discriminating against children, so you can't do that unless it truly is senior housing, which is defined, I believe, at sixty-two and old.
And then, okay, cause a lot of people have kids later on in life.
All right, next item on our agenda is review, uh, OSRD draft bylaw for fall town meeting and possible vote. So. My biggest concern, and I think you and I talked the other day, Mark, uh, I was just making sure that there is no wiggle room within this for it to be anything other than single-family homes.
That's correct.
That's my biggest concern because I think my sales pitch is that the tax money you reap from a single-family home is far better than a duplex or a quad building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I, I think that's good. Uh, did anybody else, Michelle, did you have any concerns?
So I finally had a chance to go back and compare it to, um, the previous version that went to town meeting. Um, the purpose, the first section looked exactly the same. Um. I don't feel like it's, I mean, even the first, number one, uh, the wording, to permit maximum flexibility and creativity in design for the development of single-family subdivisions that will be superior to conventional plans, I just don't even agree with that, honestly. I mean, if I'm, you know, thinking open space residential on behalf of Lakeville, I mean, number four, um, sort of encompasses that, but, um, that's really the only one, I just, I, I just feel like it still needs work, it's not a good reflection of, um, what Lakeville is looking for.
Well, it's, I, you have to remember that part of this is to develop a home, not just the open space component, you know, part of that is.
Right, but the benefit to the town in allowing these smaller lots is that we get to preserve open space. And that is something that is important to the majority of the residents in town. And those are the people who will be voting on this and I just don't think it's, um, I don't think, I don't feel comfortable bringing it to town meeting.
What page, Jack?
Well, this is the document.
Oh, you're talking D two?
Yeah, D one two.
He's talking about the part that was inserted based on the location near, um, water. I thought that we weren't gonna include that.
So it's, it's twenty acres unless you're abutting a, um, uh, existing conservation land and you're adding to it, then you can reduce the, um.
Added space?
You can reduce the size of the OSRD to ten acres because what, uh, the, it can, one of the main concerns of, uh, Conservation Commission was having lots of little isolated parcels, three acres here, four acres there. So in order to avoid that, uh, we put a minimum a, a size of ten acres, so you have a pretty decent, of twenty acres of which ten would be protected. So you'd have a pretty good sized piece of open space. So, but, um, then you need twenty acres, but if you happen to have a piece of land that's, um, between ten and twenty acres that abuts another piece of conservation land and you can design it such that that open space can be incorporated into that conservation land, then you can go to ten acres. That's correct.
How about if we scratch that? And just keep it twenty acres?
Well, I mean, the, the second part of that would be, um, and this was something that someone wanted to have in there is that because there are some smaller, not twenty acre parcels, but smaller parcels that abut some of the pond, that could, could be developed. And so they felt that, um, if they, they could do a, uh, OSRD and have the open space along the pond so that it provides a buffer between the homes and the pond for water quality, um, uh, reasons that, uh, that it would also be a beneficial thing, so, um, so that's what B is, that's the intent of two B.
So that's something, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I mean, I'd like to see it mapped. I'd like to see how many parcels there are that would fit into that category, um, that are, that are near the water. So I guess I'd just like to get a, a visual idea of like what we're talking about.
The potential.
Yeah.
So I, I, I say we just scratch it for now and just go with one, three and four and renumber them, Mark? Just scratch number two unless there's one part of that, but I, I don't like the reduction to ten and. I don't, I, I just don't like the appearance of us greasing the skids for somebody with fifteen acres. Or whatever, but that said, I think that's something that if it works and if it passes, we've talked about it a little bit, Mark, that the simplification of this to go to town meeting with it as clean as possible.
Mm-hmm.
I think makes more sense, so I'd, I'd like to see number two scratched entirely and just renumber three and four to two and three.
We can do that.
But yeah, it opens the door to try, some of the, not trying to sneak in, but find a loophole, uh.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather see something work on a big one, you know, if, if a, is a fifty acre parcel out there and it works, then I think it's easier to come back and make some adjustments. Or if we just don't get one and say, hey, but three people have tried to apply with.
Right, I'd like to do it with a smaller piece.
But I'd rather come back with an amendment to an existing bylaw and work those things in at that point. I did, I, I, so once we turn the page there with Jack's comment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you go to in section E, number six. All accessory structures and uses shall comply with requirements of section five of these bylaws unless otherwise provided herein, but they're all lettered.
Yeah, so this is actually, I've, uh, edited this with Tracy, so this is actually, I believe, under the recodification, it's article, it's called, instead of section, it's called Article Roman numeral five.
So that just, it needs to be changed to article?
Yeah.
Rather than section?
Yeah, and then with a Roman numeral.
Now it makes sense, cause I looked all through this looking for a second.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Nora.
On section F, number two, but it's on the same page as G. Up at the top, it talks about only ten percent of the open space land may be used for new agricultural, horticulture or community gardens provided that only organic methods are employed. Do we anywhere define what organic methods are? I think we need to because there's a lot of different interpretations of organic, you have to understand that was my past life. And if we don't define it, someone will define it for themselves.
There was actually a version of this that I had worked on that had definitions, I don't know if that was included in the definitions, but there was a different version. And it had like a different purpose that was actually what I consider, you know, a reflection of Lake, Lakeville.
Mr. Chairman. Three, detention and retention basins shall be located in the open space, is, is that in compliance or does that take away from the purpose of the open space?
No, it says right there, detention and retention basins may be located in the open space, however, this land area may not be counted towards the minimum open space requirement. So if somebody came in with twenty acres, then they'd have ten acres of open space. And if the retention ponds were there, they'd have to have like ten and a half acres. Is that correct, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
So it could be adjacent to it or in the middle of it, but it wouldn't be counted towards the acreage of the fifty percent.
Thank you.
I, I have another question too, so I, so the open space, is that public access? You said it's open to the public, but if it's, if the development's a private way with an HOA?
It needs to be designed in such a way that the land is accessible to the public.
And the, but then if it's, if it, cause I know there was mention like later on about like the HOA and.
Well, it still needs to be designed so that the, of land, I mean, there's the whole benefit of. Well, it still needs to be designed so that the, of land, I mean, the whole benefit of doing it in a-
The town doesn't benefit by it.
Right, that's why, I mean, that sounds like, who's, who's-
You know, that's, that's your choice as a homebuyer to buy into this development where you have a private road, but you do have the open-space land, whether it's behind your house or down the street, that people can come in and use that open-space land.
And it'll be the HOA. What I'm saying to get the pathways to, because it says about pathways getting to the open space.
Yeah, well, that's part of the design process.
Part of the developer's responsibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, work that into the design.
If they're probably down in the estate section there.
And one more thing, I know it says, like, the parcel must be used for snowmobiles or motorized travel. I don't know, like, I understand the motorized travel, but get into about, like, personal motorized devices for people. I don't know if you want it. I, I know what that, what it's meant for, but-
Right, yeah, I mean,
it's not going to be a dirt bike track, is it?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
John probably brings up a good point that-
Yeah, I mean, if someone goes down with an e-bike, right, instead of just a regular pedal bike?
I'm thinking more like someone on, like, a personal, you know, like, a motorized, not scooter, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, powered wheelchair or something like that.
Yeah, exactly.
And you're going to deprive us of that ability.
That's all I'm saying, I don't know, other than, yeah.
Right.
Has to be reworded.
Do they make those to go off-road?
I don't know.
I guess it depends on the level of trails that would be provided in this open space.
Right.
Do you need to put in there then, other than for, uh?
All the wording.
Right, you could be like gasoline-powered.
No, no, you put the one exclusion of I think the better way is a handicapped. Mm-hmm. Somebody who has a handicap and has a motorized vehicle.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a, a, a means to just exclude that from being prohibited?
Yeah, where, where is that again?
Uh, hold on, just, it's not it.
Six under F.
Oh, I see, okay. Some of yous.
Or other motor-
So I can say, other than, than, um, ex-
Excuse me, is there a better word?
Yeah, I-
No, trust me, I know.
I thought about it a few weeks ago and then I forgot.
Well, what you don't want to do is have someone go down there, let's say, with a four-wheeler, has, like, a handicapped person, like, hanging off the back.
Yeah, you know, you see the handicapped people with the powered wheelchairs and those, those things can't go at more than three miles an hour.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know whether it's really necessary to put that exclusion in, I mean, no one's going to be-
I'm just thinking of another place where it's an HOA, where it's a private road, and someone from the public tries to go down there and then they, they're just going to hang on it. That's all I'm saying, if someone goes down and it's not, that's-
Yeah, but it's public, so.
Nope.
Yep. Anything else?
Oh, my zoom far away. Chair, I'm way off, they move my way.
Nora, are you good with the rest of that?
Yeah, fine, yeah.
Michelle, did you want to try and reword any of the purpose?
Um, I mean, I'd have to look back at, um, I don't know, I just feel like it's been very rushed and I, I, I would have liked to put, I'm, like I said, I put, I put so much time into this previously. I hate to have to keep going back and, you know, the paragraphs that I put in and time that I spent, and it's not even here. It's kind of frustrating. So I like the purpose that, um, like I said, that I believe I had shared with the board the last time.
Does anybody have that?
But, but the purpose doesn't really impact the application of the bylaw, how you would interpret it, how you would apply it, how a site could be designed, it's just-
But this is something that has to go to town meeting and be approved by Lakeville residents. And it, to me, it has to sound like something that people in town want to support. And number one, reading that, I just, I, I don't know. I mean, it's Foxborough, right? Isn't this right out of Foxborough?
Well, I've modified some of it, so I don't know what is.
I don't think it represents Lakeville.
You know.
Right, that's just me, I mean, so it's up to the rest of the board here.
Does anyone else have any opinion on the, uh, wording of number one in the purpose section A?
I mean, you can take it out, and it still doesn't affect the legal viability of the bylaw. So if you want to take it out, it's, it's fine. I mean, the rest of it still gives enough purpose to the bylaw that it's, you know, explains what it does, so, um.
You like number one?
Does it sound any better if you just scratched the word maximum?
No.
And you-
Right, it sounds awful. I, I think just scratching it would probably be the best, in my opinion.
Take out number one entirely?
Yeah.
Because I was just going to say, if you just took out the word maximum and cha-change the word superior to comparable, "to permit flexibility and creativity in design for the development of single-family subdivisions that will be comparable to conventional plans."
Or leave it, "flexibility and creativity in design that must be presented and approved by the planning board."
But that's not the purpose.
I can just take it out.
All right, scratch it. Scratch number one and renumber. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
So we'll have one, two, and three.
What's, Mr. Chairman, sprawl development mean? Like, LeBaron?
No. It means your conventional seventy thousand square foot lot subdivisions.
Yeah.
That's what you have now is sprawl, sprawl development, where you have huge lots just along long streets and just utilizing lots and lots of land. Yes.
Whereas we have snob zoning is what it's called in Lakeville. That's a seventy thousand square foot lot with a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage, whereas the state's minimum on frontage is twenty feet, right? That's their, like, in the subdivision control handbook, you have to have a minimum of twenty feet, but Lakeville says one seventy-five.
It's the sprawl that gives it the rural feel.
Okay.
Anybody else want to make any edits to this before we move on? Okay, so we're removing number one from purpose and renumbering. We are removing the entirety of number two under Section D and renumbering number three and four to become two and three. On E, Section E, number six, we're changing Section Five to Article Five with the Roman numeral five. Were there any other edits? And that's all I have, any others?
Personal motorized mobility device. He goes, what the?
I don't think you like old people.
Oh, it's fine.
Do we want to add something for there, or are we?
You don't feel like it's, I, I mean, I, I just-
I could, I could say, except for motorized wheelchairs. I think if you call it what it is, it's a motorized wheelchair. I mean, you know, some kid will probably go spy one, soup one up and put a giant lawnmower engine in it and-
I mean, you can leave it, it's fine, I was just, I think, I think it read differently before. I just marked it up.
Except for other motorized travel, except for motorized wheelchairs. Okay.
All right, with those four changes, uh, I'm going to make a motion to approve this article, uh, to go to town meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item in the agenda, signed by law. Mark, you and I have talked briefly at one point, uh, that Lillian said we should divide this into two separate articles. Is that something that we?
Uh, yes, uh, Lillian would like us to, um, divide this into two separate articles because, um,
One's an add and one's an amendment.
Yeah, they kind of address two separate things. One is the clarification of special permits that the ZBA issues for special permits, and, um, the other one's something new, so, uh-
All right, so for, for official purposes, I'm going to make a, a motion for the planning board to divide these two bylaw changes into two separate articles for town meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so at this point, we're going to discuss the first add to Sections two, seven, zero, dash, six point six, yeah, special permits. Uh, this is just an update with, by the zoning board of appeals. That's really the only change.
Yep, because we weren't specific, it's in the, um,
Okay.
That section.
So that will be its own warrant item. Is everybody okay with that wording?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
And we will, within my motion, I'm going to make a motion to approve that for the town meeting warrant and allow it to be renumbered by either the town clerk or whoever sees fit to renumber that for the warrant.
Second.
And, and to approve it as drafted.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So the next item, uh, it was to add this entire section to seventy dash seven point four, uh, number thirty, sign, changeable copy signs, electronic message board signs, and internally illuminated signs. These signs must meet the following standards. Uh, A, the par, uh, the parcel where the sign is proposed shall not abut properties on either side or across the street that are zoned residential or contain a single-family dwelling. B, if the property cannot meet the above standards, a special permit may still be issued only if the sign is for a use that identifies municipal or public safety buildings, medical facilities, or retail stores that sell medical supplies. C, it must be determined that the sign is not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And renumber the remainder of this section accordingly. Uh, does anybody have any edits, questions, concerns, changes to this language?
Do we need to designate who approves this?
Say again?
Do we need to designate who approves these signs? As we, just like we did in-
Well, it's zoning board of appeals, we did that in the first section.
Yeah, but now these are going to be two separate articles.
Correct. Because one is, Lillian explained to Mark, you want to try to explain, but it's two separate things that we're doing. So rather than do it in one article because they have different meaning, she recommended that we separate the two.
No, I understand that, it, I just am asking, should, should we add that it's the zoning board of appeals that-
So-
The first section already covers that.
The first, the first section is the section- So, so that's correct, they're in different portions of the bylaw, but the first one talks specifically about changeable copy electronic message boards and internally illuminated signs, which is what-
And that's what the zoning board of appeals will permit, and then we're given a clarification to when they should be granted.
What if the first one they wrote down?
Right.
And then, is that what you're saying?
The first one won't get broken down.
I'm just saying that because they're now going to be separated, that I think we need to add to two seventy-seven point four that it's a special permit granted by the zoning board of appeals.
Because it, I think, well, so unless the language exists, it already says special permit needed. I think it already says special permit needed, there were just no parameters. But seeing this on its own without seeing the language around it, I'm not sure where that fits in, or where, because it did say by special per- So it might, I think what it is, it's under the heading, Nora, that says special permits. And then these are listed, signs, changeable copies.
Okay, so right in-
But I, like I said, I have to look at it.
Right in the language of this section that we're discussing, where it says, "These signs must meet the following standards in order to receive a special permit by the zoning board of appeals."
Yes.
Just add right at the end of that sentence where there's a semicolon, just add "following standards in order to receive a special permit by ZBA." And so then it's in the section. You get the clarification, and it's, it's probably redundancy, but it's better than not having it.
You said this whole section was getting added?
Yeah.
This, this whole section, so isn't it already there? Because isn't, it's just the bold stuff that's getting added, right?
No, the bold stuff was, uh, what, um,
No, this is-
So the first time we reviewed it, it did not have or contains a single-family dwelling, and it, it just said stores that sell medical supplies. So I clarified it to retail, because you could have a wholesale store. And there's no reason for a wholesale store.
A wholesale store doesn't need a flashing sign.
Okay, all right, no, I just, I wasn't sure if it was, we're adding the entire section or if we're just adding the stuff.
Michelle wanted it a little bit tighter.
On, on the contain a single-family dwelling was Michelle's request.
All right, so the bold is what we decided the last time. Okay, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, but-
Because the way this looked, I thought-
The whole thing is an add.
Right, that's the whole way it looked, I wasn't sure, I was like, I thought, well, yeah, we have to bold the whole thing, so adding number thirty.
Okay, so we're going to add, "in order to receive a special permit by ZBA," at the end of that. Uh, anybody else? Add change? Scratch? Anything else on that one?
I hope it's good enough. I hope that's, like, strong enough.
What, you have to, or be located across the street? Does it have to say that, or across the street? You don't butt, I guess it doesn't matter.
I mean, I don't even see them anywhere, but-
We talked about that, could be behind, and we didn't want to create a hardship to the business because somebody is-
Right, no, I understand that, yeah, that makes sense.
Uh-
I would just scratch it and say the special permit.
All right, so with that change, I make a motion to approve and send this to town meeting for the warrant, uh, with that one change.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Nora.
I'd like to postpone the goals, only because I've been out of commission for a few weeks and I haven't been able to, uh, review these to look at updates that we've done. And I don't think it's fair for us to sit here and go over one by one when I haven't done my due diligence yet.
I will gladly postpone that.
Thank you.
Uh, so Kathy, if you could add that to our next agenda, please. Uh, discuss chapter land maps. We've got a page, well, it's several, four or five pages printed of properties identified by owner's name, parcel ID, address, acreage, uh, whether it's sixty-one A or B.
So this was something that I emailed out because, um, I know that there was something that happened with a property that is chapter sixty-one, and, uh, you know, somebody mentioned, you know, we should have a map. And I'm like, oh, we have a map in the, um, master plan, so I pulled up the map, and then sure enough, the parcel was not designated as chapter property on the map. So I thought it's, it's probably a good thing to keep, to, to first make sure that it's up to date and then keep an eye on as well, because if we don't have a map that's up to date with all these properties, and-
Question, I don't know, I'm a dummy. How, how does one get notified? I'm sure the ta-tax, tax assessor would be the place to go to get, where if something gets added to sixty-one?
Yes.
So, um, people who file for chapter land have to file with the assessor's office. Um, and then they have to file every year to keep the property in chapter land. Um. They take it, um, if they fail to file, eventually it comes out of chapter land. Um, if you wanna add, you just go to the assessor's office during the appropriate time of year and submit the filing.
Typically, I. Would we seek that from them or can we request notification?
We can request, I don't know where, Michelle, did you request this from, uh, the assessors?
No, this, this, the spreadsheet was actually something that we collected when working on CPI.
Oh, okay. So, um, I, I mean, I can request that I get a chapter land list. I don't know whether they can. They should be able to generate it by the, um, use, the code, you know, in their system. Um, I believe they can run reports based on the use code, so they, they may be able to do that, um. You know, so there's generally not a lot of, uh, changes to the chapter land, but usually, you know, um, there's not a lot of additions, although I guess there was one this year. I talked to Norman about.
Probably worth going back, probably three years though, because Serphead closes out that information, you know, cause I just remember voting on the master plan, it seemed like it was an attorney, eternity. And I'm sure that when we voted on it, something was added in that.
Oh, sure.
Probably eleven to fourteen months from the time they stopped collecting information. It took them a long time to get us a draft.
Yes.
And then for us to vote on it, cause I, I even, I noticed in one of the maps, not this one, I owned a parcel that was misidentified.
Mm-hmm, right.
It just seems like something I, I would love to see on the GIS map as a layer, you know, check off chapter sixty-one and have it.
Well, is that something that, uh, at some point we could request Serphead hours to, to do that, or is that something we would be doing on GIS?
Well, um, let me check two things. So let me check with Norman and get the latest, um, the latest, uh, list of chapter lands and then let me check with Serphead. So we had to update a lot of maps, which they did do last year, but it was, so it would be a year's information. Uh, last year's information for the open space plan. And, and I can, there's discussion about chapter land, but I don't know whether chapter land maps is one of those maps, but I can, uh, I can check as well.
Okay.
So why don't I do those two things?
Would you add this discussion to next agenda as well, please? So we'll work on updating that. Thank you for concluding that, Michelle. Uh. Got a couple sets of minutes. We have June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Did any, everybody that was present, which is everybody, get a chance to go through these? Any, uh, comments or edits?
I sent my one comment to Kathy after the fact, but she didn't get it, so.
All right, so, so this set that we have did not include that edit? Or it did?
No, it did.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting for the planning board for Thursday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, with the change noted from Michelle to Kathy. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, those minutes were approved. Next set of minutes is Thursday, August tenth. Um, looks like it was another full meeting.
No, I was not there.
Nora, you weren't there. Um. Any other comments or edits on these? I remember that one killing time, doing the minutes first. You good with it, Michelle?
Yep.
Tom?
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, August tenth, twenty twenty-three as drafted.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any correspondence, Mark?
Yes.
What do you got?
Um, we have, well, a lot of, uh, it seems like activity was picked up from other cities and towns. But the most significant, um, notice that you've received is on, um, in Middleborough.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, another forty B, two hundred and ninety-six units. What's the, it says, um, one sixty-two East Grove Street.
Route twenty-eight.
Route twenty-eight, that's correct. Um, so it's down, the property is where there's, uh, like a junkyard, auto parts sale place on the.
Left, right?
Yeah, on the left side.
So you're going towards like Carver, it's on the left.
That's correct. So I don't know whether it's all of that property or just a portion of it, but it's on that side of the road.
Sounds like a beautiful site.
Yeah.
So. Um, so that's, that's the most significant of, of the, um, of the hearings. Um, there was, um, an approval in, um, Berkeley of, um, what is it, Myrick's, uh, of a, two warehouses just on the other side of the Route one forty.
Yep.
Um, so that was a notice of a decision by, uh, Berkeley, which was one of.
Punch him?
Uh, oh, yeah, we, yeah.
You're not talking to your brother-in-law anymore?
No.
Uh.
I, yeah, we'll see, they, they shot, they tried to go twenty-four hours and they shot, the town shot that down, so I have a feeling they did that in a way to scare off the other developers, said if it wasn't twenty-four hours, they weren't gonna do it. So I think, who knows what happens, but I think they approved it.
Okay.
But they, I think the town said they shut it down, the twenty-four hour operation. They wanna do twenty-four hour operation. Which is kinda like in my, it's close to me, so I was like, what are you?
It's just a shame whenever you see these farms getting developed.
Yeah.
Kinda all happen now.
So.
That's all the two most significant things, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, has there been anything from Free Town on housing development since they're now a?
Teen community?
Yep.
Um, well, the last thing I talked to them was, I don't know, six months ago and, no, not quite six. Four or five months ago and that they are, um, you know, trying to comply with the requirements that they're doing planning um, for around the train station, uh, to allow multi-family development in some manner to comply with the state requirements, so.
My concern is the effect on the school system.
Yeah, I thought we were waiting for a joint meeting back in May. Guess that didn't happen.
We did have a little turnover, the select board, I could follow up with them, or you could, Mark, just ask. Yeah, Leah was kinda talking about doing that with the select board and planning board in Free Town. But just to see if they have any interest in it, if our select board has any interest in that joint meeting.
And actually, I will say that I did see Free Town was having an open discussion about not the housing portion, but the MBTA itself. Um, which I think that would be good for Lakeville as well. There's a lot of people that are affected that aren't necessarily qualified as affected.
Yeah. Uh, our next meeting is September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, here at the Lakeville Police Station at seven PM.
Uh.
One more, I'm sorry, um, the zoning board of appeals joint meeting is the twenty-first, next week.
Next Thursday.
At seven thirty. So Kathy did send that out.
Yeah, their meeting starts at seven, but they have us on the agenda for seven thirty.
Eric.
Maybe, maybe.
We have two.
Good library, right?
So it would probably be more like seven fifteen, seven twenty.
Oh, okay. So like seven o'clock then?
Yeah, so we're posting your meeting for seven o'clock, just to be on the safe side, so.
Wrapped up quick or?
Yeah.
Or two, you're saying two things got continued to the next meeting? So there's no business or less business in front of us. Okay. Uh, anything else? Anybody have anything else before we make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.